Led allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Today is Wednesday, November 9, 2022. The time being 6:30 p.m. The meeting of the Greensburg City Council is called to order. At this time, please silence all electronic devices to comply with Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964. The city requests that participants in this meeting complete a voluntary anonymous survey that's available on the table on the back of the room. Amy, please call the floor.
Rick Ensler.
Here.
Kevin Fleetwood.
Here.
Daryl Holley.
Here.
Jamie Kane. Viana McKenzie.
I did know that those two would be absent this evening. They should have all received a copy of the meeting minutes from October 11th, the regular meeting. Any added additions or questions? If not, take a motion to approve those as presented.
So moved.
Motion made by Daryl.
Second.
Second by Rick. All those in favor, say five, saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Kevin abstains. Is that approvable?
Well, technically, you don't have to abstain. So technically, even though you weren't at a meeting, you don't have to abstain from the vote on the approval of the minutes because what you're approving is that you believe that Amy wrote down. With only two of the five, I don't think you have enough to pass. So would you like to reconsider if you're upset?
Those are changing his vote to aye. Three. Okay. The public hearing on October 11th, any added additions or questions to those? If not, a motion to approve as presented?
So moved.
Motion has been made by Rick.
Second.
Second by Daryl. All those in favor, say five, saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. The second public hearing on the 11th. Any additions? If not, motion to approve as presented?
So moved.
Motion made by Daryl.
Second.
Second by Rick. All those in favor, say five, saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Okay. First thing of old business, ordinance 2022-25, that's the additional appropriation for fuel we covered last month. Any questions for Amy? If not, take a motion to approve that as presented.
So moved.
Motion's made by Kevin.
Second.
Second by Rick. All those in favor, say five, saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Okay. First item under new business is a discussion from Brian Robbins, Director of the Economic Development Corporation about our Regional Development Authority. Good evening, Brian. Thanks for being here.
Thanks for having me. I'm here on behalf of the Accelerate Rural Indiana Regional, I guess, Group. You might have remembered us from such programs as the Ready Program. I'll have a brief look at that. Okay. I'm here to talk to you today about the formation of a Regional Development Authority. This is something that's always kind of been on our strategic, in our strategic plan for the Accelerate Rural Indiana Group, which again is made up of Shelby County, Shelbyville, Decatur County, Greensburg, Rush County, Rushville, and the city of Batesville. Essentially, I'll be answering these kind of questions. What is, what is an ARA, which essentially I just told you was formed to pursue ready funds through the Ready Program at the state last year? And what is an RDA? We'll just go ahead and start off with the Accelerate Rural Indiana. We were rewarded $20 million in ready funds last year after a long, actually relatively short actually, but a lot of work period of time. And I think we had over, what is it, forty-some projects in our region that we put together using both public and private commitments as well as input from residents of the region. One of the issues, though, we are faced with is that we have no formal means of kind of dispersing those $20 million. We've been utilizing the Decatur County Community Foundation, they very generously, Tammy and Company have very generously been serving as the administrator for those funds as they trickle in. We're still at the beginning stages, but it's our intention to form a Regional Development Authority to help specifically disperse these funds. Our redevelopment, our Regional Development Authority is established through Indiana Code. It allows two or more adjacent counties to participate in an RDA as a separate body, corporate and a political body. It is put in place to, with the purpose of attracting business and people to the, to the region and can select various projects of specific importance in order to do that. What it also does is help us not only qualify us for, well, if they do come up with Ready 2.0 funds, which is something that has been discussed at great length at the state level, but also funds at the federal level as well. Again, I talked about we have no official regional entity to administer the $20 million of ready funds that we have established and have been using the Community Foundation. And I kind of covered this with the talk about the Ready 2.0 program. We want to be as prepared as possible. We already have projects actually in the works that stemmed from all the input we had from the, from the general public within the region. And there's even some regional projects within those, within that, those, that strategy, areas such as New Point and St. Paul that actually touch three different counties and the cooperative effort towards the development of those areas or the improvement of those areas would be of benefit. So how we establish it? We need to adopt an ordinance, and in this case, it would be the county council because once the county's adopted, then the, any third-class cities are automatically enclosed, essentially are included. Essentially, what I'm doing now is just making you guys aware of what the proposal is. The plan is to have the, the counties of Shelby, Rush, and Decatur establish the RDA, and then once that RDA is established, the city of Batesville will come along as a partner as well. It's governed by state statute, as I said, and be governed by actually a board of directors. It'll be five appointed members at four-year terms. Those will be staggered. As of now, the board members cannot be elected officials. I think there's been some recent developments with the formation of an RDA in Central Indiana that's been kind of flexed a little bit. We're still looking into that. But the RDA that we're mimicking, we researched a lot of them around the state, and we're being going to, been modeling ours after the Northern Indiana RDA, and they have five appointed members. They cannot be elected officials, and the board members are appointed by written agreement from the executives within the membership, and that being the commissioners and the How's it going to be funded? Right now, through our Ready, the Ready Award, we've already allotted some funds to cover a director or consultant to help fund the Ready Programs or the administrative pieces of the Ready Programs. The Ready 2.0 is a, is a future funding source for it as well. We're not proposing any taxes or anything, but RDAs are allowed by state statute to, to get funds through the added taxes. And of course, the RDA will continuously pursue additional grants and such to fund not only itself, but the projects. You see the priorities there? It's kind of been the priorities of the Ready Program in general. Housing, public infrastructure, quality of life, education, workforce development, regional marketing. Our goals are to increase our population, our regional income, increase the educational attainment, and our overall regional assets. I think, and mentioned some priority projects there, we do have a core set of 40 projects that we developed through community input exceeding $866 million. And we actually have 30 more projects for, set for Ready 2.0 exceeding $407 million. So I mentioned some of the priorities, things like New Point, St. Paul, those kind of collective regional projects. I can say that, and the mayor can probably speak on the committee or group's behalf, I think the cooperation that's been seen not only amongst its leaders, but amongst the populations in our region has been phenomenal. It's been noticed by the state as a whole, and what we want to do is essentially formalize that, that cooperation, formalize that camaraderie more or less, and for the benefit of the entire region. So in a nutshell, that's what we're proposing or pursuing.
Thanks, Brian, for all the help you've had through the whole Ready project, and it goes much unseen, but not much unappreciated. There's a lot of effort that's been put into this. Any questions for Brian on this RDA concept and/or where we're at? Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Brian.
Up next, Rich Starkey is here again this month, Barnes and Thornburg, and our next step of the public safety or fire station, street department campus. So, Rich, I'll turn it over to you to guide us through the next couple bullet points there, please.
Sure. Rich Starkey, Barbara Barnes Thornburg. So the first step is to have a whole public hearing for the appropriation, I believe, right?
That's correct.
And so if someone would like to open the public hearing, we could do that. So this is a public hearing for appropriating the part of the bond proceeds that are going to go for the northern half of the, of the land where the Public Works Building and the Fire Station will be built.
I have a motion to open the public meeting for the appropriations.
Motion's been made to open the public hearings. Your second?
Second.
Second by Rick. All those in favor, say five, saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on Resolution 2022-12, approval of appraisals, transfer of site, and additional appropriation for the project as mentioned? Seeing and hearing none, would entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Motion's made by Rick. Sir, second? Second by Kevin. All those in favor, say five, saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed.
Great. Thank you. So the resolution is before you, is part of the process we're doing for the bonds. As you know, we're going to be doing two different bonds, one for the Fire Station, one for the Public Works. It is also subject to a lease, and so the building corporation will be actually issuing the bonds, leasing the project to the city. And because we have this lease mechanism in place to do this, it's, it's also necessary for the building corporation to actually own the land, the northern half of the property, because that's what they're going to be leasing back to the city. And so in order to do that, they have to purchase the property under the statute from the city. So part of the bond proceeds will actually be transferred to the city, and at closing, then the money will be transferred to the seller of the public land. So that's what the appropriation does, and then the appraisals, which have been done in the past, are part of the approval process here, too. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Rich? We were talking a little bit before the meeting, and we're going to get to this later, too. So this is only the first, or this is on the northern half.
Correct.
The city is set, we're seeing the southern half.
Correct.
And so that is outside the scope of this.
Correct.
And there will be documentation that we, Chris and you and I, will work on for the December meeting as to how to deal with that, based on the conversation later in tonight's agenda about the Redevelopment Commission partnering with us on that, just so we're all on the same page.
Correct.
Okay. No other questions for Rich? Would entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2022-12? Motion's made by Kevin?
Second.
Second by Rick. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
May I ask a question, please?
Yes.
Maybe on the Redevelopment Commission, am I okay to vote for this?
Yes.
Add one more yea.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Rich. Thank you for being here and helping us walk through this whole process. Much appreciated. Aye.
He called it right as, he called it at the same time that Daryl said, can I say something? So it was, everybody said yes.
Up next, Zeke Smith, Waste Water Superintendent. Zeke, you've got a proposal this evening that you'd like to chat about and share.
Correct. Good evening, council. Mayor, I'm here. For you guys should be some information regarding a future potential Ohio Street Lift Station property addition. I got a picture of that for you there to kind of take a peek at. That address is 701 North Ohio Street. The current asking price is $125,000, and it is currently for sale. That property, just to talk a bit about it, that and the lift station, that does butt up against our Ohio Street Lift Station. Just a little information about that lift station. That lift station manages about two-thirds of the flow that goes to Greensburg each and every day. That ends up being about two or three million gallons per day. There's currently three pumps inside of that wet well. Two of those pumps, which pretty much run all the time, that lift station can also fill up in about two hours, so it's managing quite a bit of flow. So when that thing goes down, it's kind of all hands on deck for us, which I kind of told earlier, same story, but so when those tornado came through here in 2010, 2011, we lost power to that lift station, so we had to take our generator from the plant over to Ohio Street, which you know is not very far. Took about an hour and a half because of downed power lines and kind of downed trees. By the time our team got there, that lift station was about to overflow, rolled sewage onto the street, so didn't take long to fill it up. Luckily, nothing happened there, but definitely a, a near miss. So just want to show the importance of us being able to respond to that efficiently and quickly. Kind of reasons for purchase, you know, for me, I want to be able to house that generator onsite there. There currently isn't a whole lot of space to put anything. You can see kind of the driveway there. I have future aspirations to keep that generator there, build a building over that, probably temperature control that, keep power to the generator. That's a diesel, so it needs to be able to start when we need it, even in the winter. You know, that lift station continues to take on more and more flow, so you know, for us, having that property would also allow us, you know, for future growth of that lift station, if we wanted to make upgrades, add another wet well or what have you. And for the ease of maintenance, as far as having multiple vehicles there at once, having a crane truck there, while the back truck's there, while the generator's there, currently you can see there's not much space to do anything once the generator gets put in place. So here in front of you guys tonight, seeking approval to purchase that at the asking price and/or the average of two, two appraisals, or there's a lesser amount of that. Anything else I need to go over there or?
No, there's, I mean, there's a statutory procedure by which the city purchases property. I believe the superintendent is just asking to proceed with that statutory process, which is generally entails getting an appraisal of the property, or two appraisals of the property. You know, there's a set amount that the city can purchase, which is generally the average of the two properties. And then it would simply be authorization for the executive tenor to a purchase agreement upon Resolution 12. So I think what the, what the superintendent is asking for is just authorization from this body who oversees the fiscal matters of the city to proceed with the statutory process of purchasing this property.
Will there be any zoning issues attached to this?
I, I can't imagine why there would be. We don't intend to convert it into something else, and municipal services can operate in any zoning classification.
Okay. That's the answer I was looking for. Thank you.
We had talked a little bit about the, where the money comes from.
Yeah. It's not in my budget. It kind of popped up on our radar the last couple of weeks, as you guys know. But after speaking with Donna about it a couple of times this week, the funds are there in our sewer general fund, so we should be able to cover it from that perspective. So I'm not asking for any additional funds from you guys, just purchase to kind of use the funds that we currently have.
Maybe looking, do you make sure the house?
Probably some sort of renovation to make the house into a garage, so that's something that our guys can do ourselves. We've got a couple of guys on our crew that work at the plant. They're ex, ex kind of construction guys that are still in the business of kind of building and renovating, so I think we can probably handle a lot of that ourselves.
Funds to take care of.
Yeah, yeah, we should be okay there.
So if we approve, put him forward with paying two appraisals, he still has to come back to this body to get another approval, spend the money if he so wants to be forward.
Even though it's in our budget already?
Well, I mean, I, if you approve him to proceed statutorily, he would not necessarily have to, because you already, you, you've already approved him to purchase it based off of the two appraisals, if you're doing this. I mean, you could require him to come back in here before you, once you have the appraisals, and how do you know what your approval is and what your approval is?
I think that's, it was one, the asking price is 125. We have to get two appraisals. So I think where Zeke's request is, it's 125 or, or the two appraisals.
Whichever the lesser amount of that would.
Yeah. Whichever is lesser.
Yeah.
Because we're confident.
It's a purchase, a purchase approval not to exceed 125.
Yeah. And also the, the sellers ready to sell, and they're kind of holding off for us to, you know, get a chance at purchasing this, so.
If you never don't know, if you go there and look, it's tied.
Yeah.
It's, it's tied, and I think it is in the city's best interest to have control of that parcel next to that. So I'll make a motion to proceed with.
A motion's been.
Major process to purchase this process.
Okay.
Second.
Not to exceed 125, 125,000.
I'll second.
Motion's been made by Kevin, second by Rick. Any further questions or discussion? If not, all those in favor, say five, saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Perfect. Thank you. Thank you, Zeke. Thanks for being on the lookout for that. Appreciate it.
Thanks, guys.
Ron May, City Engineer, has a couple items this evening. First one is the Resolution 2022-11, Adoption of the Greensburg Comprehensive Plan. Matt from American Structure Point is here, I believe, with a presentation.
That's correct.
Counsel, I think we are, under the understanding Sarah sent you a copy of the comp plan a few weeks ago that was a part of a link. Can you get that? Okay. And went through the plan, well, Matt's getting that pulled up. It did go through Plan Commission.
Correct.
Kevin, you serve as president of that. Favorable recommendation?
Yes, by nothing, I think it was. Favorable.
Okay. That's kind of where we are. I know Matt and American Structure Point's been working with us on this for quite a long time, really, and getting it all kind of fine-toothed and combed out, and you have a presentation to kind of go through. Walk us through it, and any questions can come at the end. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Perfect. Floor's yours.
Great. Thank you, sir. It's wonderful to be here this evening. Thanks for everybody hearing our presentation. So as the mayor mentioned, we've been working on this for a while. You know, these, these plans typically take over a year to complete, once you go through all the various public engagement exercises, the writing of the plan, working with steering committees, so having, it takes a while to put these together if you want to do it right, and I think we've done a really great partnership here getting this plan together. Just a quick overview of what we're talking about this evening, just the process, who was involved, trends. We're going to highlight some recommendations just to show you how the plan is structured and what's in there, but it's a very long document. We don't want to go through each and every one of them and then talk a little bit about our critical path strategies, which we like to call our secret sauce. The team that was involved in this throughout the whole process, and there was others involved as well, we often involve our engineering groups and other folks to help get technical expertise. I myself am Matthew Rourke. I am the Planning and Economic Development Group Leader at American Structure Point. Philip Roth was the project manager, really the guy running this project the whole time, here doing all the day-to-day, working with steering committee. Lisa Dunaway is our Senior Urban Designer, and also ADA Mobility Expert, and Natalie Kroger's Associate Planner, who was very involved in the process as well. The process is split into three phases. We call it educate, explore, and empower. And I'm going to talk a little bit about more of what we did in each one of those phases in the next few slides, but essentially educate's all about going out, talking to the public, doing the data research, talking to steering committee, really finding out what it is that's going on in Greensburg today. Explore is digging in with the steering committees and city staff and really working through, starting to write the plan, but more importantly, looking at alternatives to make sure we're providing the information that you need to move forward for the next 10 to 20 years. And the final phase is empower, which is, it's about writing the plan still, but also about coming up with the recommendations that the city really wants to embark on in the next year or five years, to not make sure that, one, that this isn't a plan that just sits on the shelf, that's kind of an industry thing that's been talked about, really provide you a playbook on things that you want to accomplish in the next five years based on what we heard throughout this whole process. So that first phase, as I mentioned, first part, it's all about public engagement for us, and in this, it's no exception in any town, but in Greensburg, we really went all in, did a lot of extra public engagements events because we really felt it was necessary. As we got talking to the community, we found out about a lot of the dynamics that are going on here, so wanted to make sure it was very robust to the tune of going to football games, farmers' markets, festivals, the Tree City Festival, having formal public workshops where we had boards and things for people to interact with, online surveys, really, and these efforts started in August of 2021 and went all the way through May of this year. So we spent a lot of time making sure we were going out to the community, making sure we knew what they were saying and what they were, what we were hearing incorrectly to make sure what goes in the plan is really what the community wants. We don't do that just as these open meetings to the public. We have a review team, and the members listed here on the screen were involved with this, and we had several meetings with them over the course of this process. There really are head checks. They're the folks that we talk to to say, hey, are we getting this right? Are we not getting it right? Does this make sense for Greensburg? They weigh in every step of the process as well. Stakeholders, we like to sit down with individual groups of like-minded stakeholders, meaning in this case, assisted living facilities or community foundations, people that are providing some sort of service to the community that we need to know more about. So here's a list of all the groups we met with. You can see it's the housing authorities, community schools, economic development, pretty much you name it, anybody that has a stake here in Greensburg. We sat down, met with them for an hour or more, talked about issues, talked about things, and talked about what they want to see, what their hopes and dreams for the next 20 years as well. When we got all that done, you summarize it, it's basically boiled down to these are the things that, topics that bubbled up to the surface, more housing for, and it's not just housing for the sake of housing, all kinds of housing, either the new residents moving to the city, we have listed here resident transitions that could be an empty nester that wants to downsize but stay here in Greensburg, people that maybe are aging and need other types of, pretty much any kind of housing you think of, we heard that from the community said, that's what's needed here in Greensburg. More communication about city policies and actions, more transparency, more official support and programming available for local businesses. This ranged from everything from grant programs to just marketing assistance and more events, retaining youth. This was a big one. People would like to see youth maybe graduate from high school, go off to college, and come back here and go to work, or if they don't go the college route, stay here, get technical training, all those things, but really make sure that the youth that grow up here that love Greensburg have the opportunity to stay in Greensburg. Sidewalk maintenance, this talked a lot about existing sidewalks and new sidewalks, you know, whether, identified some gaps that were there. People want to see connectivity, want to be able to walk to school safely, those sorts of things. And neighborhood identity and place-making, this had a lot to do with downtown and the corridors, and we have another slide on that, so I won't get too far into it, but that's really what bubbled up to the surface in terms of themes. We don't just do public engagement in this phase. As I mentioned earlier, we do a lot of data research just to get an idea of what's going on, what are the trends. This slide just highlights a couple of those. We're going to look at population, where the growth is, how much it's growing, what the median age is, really just trying to get a basic idea of who's in Greensburg, who's living here, who's been moving in, who's been moving out. That's all part of it. And then we start to analyze that, start looking to connect the dots. This slide just highlights one of those where housing came up a lot, so we started to look into housing more and more. And this slide just highlights something interesting. We noticed that there are more households now in Greensburg than there were 10 years ago, but the household size is going down. And when you start thinking that through, that starts to make sense based on what we heard from the community, where maybe people are coming to the community, but their kids aren't coming back after they go away to school. That's one of the things. And then you look, you compare that to median age, it's increasing as well. So that whole retention of youth thing, we're starting to see that in the data, and that's some of the connections we make in the document. One last piece of this was key trends is it's growing, Greensburg is growing, we've heard we need new housing. What does that look like in terms of some projections? So we don't just want to look at static data, we want to project out in the next five to 10 years and say, all right, what's it going to look like in terms of population growth and how are we going to accommodate that population growth as this coming here? In particular, we do this in a, we use a couple of different formulas to kind of come up with a growth curve. That's the slide, it's just highlighting how we got to the projections that are in the plan. I mentioned the second phase is explore. This is all about taking all that data, all that public input, and starting to do scenarios where we're looking at where the land uses should go, the policies are in place. And in Greensburg, what we started to notice is typically when you do a comprehensive plan, there's sort of set goals and objectives and neatly defined categories like transportation or infrastructure. What we were hearing, there was a lot of overlap between those, those things. People wanted trails because, or playgrounds that link to the trails, that link to the schools. There wasn't any way to neatly define that, so we kind of took a step back, working with the committee and said, all right, here's some overarching themes, and we're going to base our goals and objectives on those. The ones that were settled on are the ones here on the screen. There was five of them, and they, they encompass a lot of different aspects of whether it be design, livability, environmental sustainability, and emergency fairness. But those are the ones that kind of, these high-level goals and objectives were set based on what we heard. One example of that is livability. Each of these sections has its own vision and mission statement, since they were so unique and so overlapping to so many facets of what goes on here in Greensburg. And in this case, the objectives we came up with were preserve, protect, and promote the city's unique attributes, foster the unique qualities of downtown Greensburg. Greensburg downtown came up a lot. People want to see new businesses, more businesses, more people living down there, promote easy understanding with the community through wayfinding. So that's something we heard overlap through transportation and branding and signage. It's one of those themes that we just heard a lot about. People want to know you're in Greensburg when you come into Greensburg, and what are some ways to emphasize that? And then the last one in this particular category is promote citywide beautification to improve the residents' quality of life. And I highlight that to say, quality of life came up a lot. That's a theme that just came through downtown. More opportunities, more living, childcare, I'm going to talk about in a little bit, is part of that, that came up a lot. And so, once we got there, we boiled those down into more specific recommendation categories. A future land use map is a key part of this. You want to talk about growth and where economic development activity might happen, or retailers could go. Your future land use map is a link between what we heard and what we see and where those areas are in the future. We took this one step further. Typically, you'll identify use, residential, commercial, industrial. Based on what we're hearing, we heard a need for multiple kinds of growth, and just to highlight that, the areas that are currently outside of the city limits you see on this map that may be become annexation. We identified some areas inside the extraterritorial jurisdiction, but also identified whether those were growth areas, meaning greenfield development, or infill areas, and that's kind of the dotted hatch market goes over this, because we were hearing a desire for both redevelopment opportunities in the existing neighborhoods and new development opportunities. So we identified on top of the land uses where maybe those opportunities exist or should be. Whenever you're talking new development or redevelopment, transportation's part of that, so put some extra identification of goals and objectives in here for transportation and planning, highlighting where the major roads are, where some major upgrades could happen, based largely on the city's existing capital improvement and planning program, extending those ideas into this plan to make sure that they talk to each other essentially. And then, one of those recommendations, because it tied so many of these themes we heard together, that just to highlight here is urban design. And this is about creating place, quality of place, and visual aesthetics that let you know you're in Greensburg. We put some sketches, and this is just to highlight, but one that came up a lot was the US 421 corridor. People just like to see maybe the appearance of that, just, just announce a little bit more that you're in Greensburg, whether it be through wayfinding, signage, or infill development, all those things. But that's just to highlight one of those themes and how we started to tie those together into formal recommendations. Downtown, we heard about downtown a lot. People love downtown Greensburg. They want it to be, continue to approve, continue to attract new retailers, continue to be the heart of the community, so there's some specific language in here about downtown. Sustainability, this one, just to highlight one of the ones in there that we pulled, we've been hearing a lot from, about economic development, economic growth, things like Honda and those type of projects. The thing that we've been hearing across the state, talking to IEDC and others, is water. A lot of these businesses, the EV battery people, the superconductor intel facility that just went over in Ohio, they all need large amounts of water. So we, in terms of thinking economics, sustainability and sustainability, to start thinking about things like water resource planning, making sure you have enough water in the future, or reforestation of existing trees. One thing we heard a lot about was people would like to see the tree canopy restored along the public streets, things like that, where maybe they've been cut down over the years and not replaced. This is just building on those themes that we heard over and over and over again. Resilience, resiliency item, attracting new residents, I think we talked about that enough tonight. And then, another one is a project that we've started working on is updating the city's unified development ordinance to make sure that all these themes are somehow encapsulated into zoning ordinance as well, so that the two plans, or excuse me, the ordinance and the plan talk together. I mentioned critical path strategies. These are the ones that we highlighted. These are the ones that we put on paper to say you should really try to accomplish these to help start marching towards these bigger goals and objectives we talked about. And not to get into all of them, but that's what we do in our power phase. Childcare survey, now we know the city can't provide childcare services per se. So what we did is think through some ways to maybe talk to other providers, talk to folks, maybe nonprofits, foundations, of ways to start to get an idea around how those services can be provided. And I know the city's already started to do this with some very creative programs, but this is just one critical path strategy we want to highlight. And it goes a step further than the other strategies in the plan, where we've laid out specific action items for the city to deliberately go through in the next, say, this one we've identified in the next one year, because it was such a hot topic, childcare came up over and over and over again. And it talks about each one, each critical path strategy, you'll see on a table just like this. So it's clearly defined what those action steps are, who might be able to help, and who should be the, kind of the project lead. So that's really the 15-second version of a comp plan. There's a lot more words in here, I know, so that, we wanted to give you the highlight this evening and see if there's any questions for us.
Thank you, Matt, to you and your whole team for working with our team on this project. Questions? Yeah. Perfect. Well, Matt, thank you again. We'll definitely be continuing to follow up on our UDO project to work through that process. I know we're already pretty far along in it. And Counsel, if there's nothing else, you do have an ordinance on first reading tonight, 2022-11, which is the adoption of the comp plan. It's a resolution, my apologies. Anything else before that? If not, would entertain a motion to approve that as presented. Motion's been made by Kevin.
Second.
Second by Daryl. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Those opposed. Thank you very much, Matt, appreciate it.
Been very great working with everybody in Greensburg as well.
We'll keep you around for a while.
All right, I like that, thank you.
Thank you. Up next, ordinance 2022-28, which is the Redevelopment Commission's request for additional appropriation. Good evening, Ron.
Good evening. The Redevelopment Commission has, well, I started to say asked me, but here I am representing them. They, in their budget created in 2021, had an appropriated amount of money they could spend for the year that as of their meeting last week, has now gotten down to about $160,000 in appropriation left. They do have about $2 million in cash and should receive about another half billion with the December tax settlement. They should receive that within the next 30 to 40 days. Well, that amount of money was looking to be very adequate for the year. They have made a couple of commitments. One of them, more recently, they have committed up to $150,000 for the Pirate Park project. They have not yet expended that money. And they, in their meeting last week, committed up to $300,000 for the purchase of the south half of the property on Broadway, where the new street department and fire department facilities are to go. They would probably be able to satisfy their commitment of $150,000 for Pirate Park and take care of the remaining business they have this year. The $300,000 for the property purchase probably will exceed their available appropriated amount. And in discussing the timing of all that, it seems a little uncertain if that need will be yet this year or will occur early in '23. Their budget for '23 should cover that amount, depends on what else they take on throughout the year. And we're all aware that their money is kind of their money. Nobody else spends it, it's up to them. So in an abundance of caution, they ask in their meeting last week, or last month, actually, they ask for an additional appropriation of a half million. That additional appropriation would make their funds adequate if they both meet the, their commitment for the Park, Park, Park project, and if before the end of the year, they meet the commitment to help the city in the purchase of the south 10 acres that was previously discussed. As I said, this is requested in an abundance of caution to just be safe. Might be that they won't need to expend the $300,000 until early next year, in which case they wouldn't need the additional. But inasmuch as the money doesn't take away from any other city activities, and it might be cleaner for everyone involved if the whole thing can be concluded yet this year, it just presents a better opportunity. So that is the reason for the request of the additional appropriation.
Speaking with Rich Starkey a little bit before the meeting regarding this, he does believe that the funds available this year to be transferred as part of the property would be very beneficial. So he does see that as likely.
The Redevelopment Commission will have one more meeting this year without special meetings, again, early December, in fact, I think the first. So whatever business needs to be concluded in this regard, while they committed up to the $300,000, there's been no detail about how that works yet. Is it a gift? Is it a stipend? Is it a purchase of part of the property? Those are things that need to yet be negotiated.
Any questions or discussion?
Are you a member of the Redevelopment Commission?
I am not.
It's my first question. If it's a standard board, why didn't one of them come and present?
Daryl is a member of the Redevelopment Commission. We asked them to help us with some money for the project as well.
I suppose if one of them would have showed up to present versus, you did a very good job.
Thank you.
Any, any further comments, questions, concerns? Daryl, anything from your side?
No, and the discussion about this was last Thursday, and I was not in attendance because of the death of the family, so. I'm just kind of learning about this right now.
I'll ask for a motion to approve it as presented, if that's where we want to go. Or does someone want to make a motion?
I'll make the motion based on what Ron's presented.
And by the way, this is first reading of an additional appropriation ordinance, and we'll come back to you in your December meeting.
Yes. Which we learned something about that earlier too, but we'll discuss that later. That is accurate, that we would need to come back on second reading. Motion's on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second the first reading.
Second by Kevin. Any further comments or questions? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Those opposed. Okay. Thank you, thank you, Ron.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda that regards to the Redevelopment Commission. I asked them to look at expanding, well, creation of a new, and I believe we put a map on your desk before you came in as well, a creating of a new economic development area that starts with, Kristen, did we print out that? So the focus of this is the former St. Mary's site, which you all have approved to be a part of an event center. And as we all know, the way the redevelopment commissions work, the area that is in the smaller box is the collection, collection section. And what we've done is the former St. Mary's site, the east side of the square and some connecting properties to get from there to there, in the hopes that redevelopment on the east side of the square is also imminent. And we also know that redevelopment commissions don't affect existing tax levies or tax rates that the city pays. It's only the capture of the increased assessed value. The larger outline on that same map is where the money fraud that's collected in that region can be spent, just as the current redevelopment commission has that collection area and an area to spend it. This TIF isn't very large in the sense of the amount of money that it will create or capture, but I do think it's impactful, or can be impactful, long-term for downtown as a way to continue to make those investments that Matt was just talking about, generating another funding source. As we all know, when AVs increase, our levies increase some, but the tax rate doesn't change. So this is a good way to capture some revenue and hopefully invest it in downtown over the coming years. We can expand the district in the future, we can reduce it in the future, but I do think it's a good way to generate some revenue that can be, can be used to benefit downtown. So that's what I've asked them for. I believe it came through Plan Commission as well.
Yes, it did. It comes to, it was forwarded to Council with a 5-0 positive recommendation.
Any questions? I can answer on this. If not, would entertain a motion to approve that as presented as well. Motion's made by Kevin.
Second.
Second by Daryl. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Okay. Thank you very much. You have in your packet the calendar for the public meetings in 2023. Trying to believe it's already that time of the year. No significant changes to the meeting schedule. I feel like we, at least here in City Hall, have thought that this meeting schedule has worked a lot better. It seems to be something that everybody can make work and works well, so we've proposed keeping that the same. I don't know that, do we need to adopt that? Okay. Any comments or questions on that?
I can just memorize the times the meetings start.
We'll change, we'll change them again.
Thank you.
And then you also have a copy of the 2023 holiday schedule. The, Kristen put together a short memo in there for you regarding, a couple changes, not a couple, one change that allows us, makes it so that we follow the State of Indiana holiday schedule and the Decatur County government schedule. The only difference is President's Day, which is a Monday in February, is removed. And the way that that works is the day after Thanksgiving and the day after Christmas are not technically holidays, right? The day of Christmas is a holiday. And so the way that the State of Indiana does that, they, they took President's Day years ago off in February and gave two days in the fall. So we currently observe all of those days, President's Day and the following Friday after Thanksgiving and the day after Christmas. So what we've, and, but the Decatur County doesn't, they work President's Day. So what we propose is we eliminate President's Day, but we keep everything else the same. It still is 14 paid holidays per year, same to the county. It is actually more than the federal government's holiday schedule, even though the feds have a couple of different holidays that the state doesn't recognize and kind of gets both ways. I realize that it's a reduction of one paid holiday per year, but I still feel that 14 paid holidays per year, I feel like they're better timed, the Friday after Thanksgiving, the day after Christmas, when people can actually plan for it. So it is your call, but that is the discussion, and in that way, both sets of government and the county are on the same schedule. Any?
I'm okay with that. What's for me?
Okay. We will proceed with that for next year as well. Anything else before we do our updates? If not, a quick update from the Board of Works. We, the YMCA has their tree. We, the YMCA has their Tree City Run 5 and 10K, that's coming, we approved street closures for that. The Holiday Walk Parade is Saturday, December 3rd, and that will be in the evening, 5:30. It is lighted, it should be a lot of fun. I would encourage everybody to participate in that. Main Street's really been working hard on the Small Business Saturday Holiday Walk for the end of the year, so we'll hopefully see everyone out there for that. Veterans' Day Parade is this coming Saturday morning, approve the parade route for that as well. We also approved the promotion of Officer Kyle Wagner from probationary to police officer. He will complete that process at the end of November and has received high marks in his field training and graduate from the Law Enforcement Academy. So we're very excited to have him join us. We also swore in a brand-new officer today into probationary status, Dylan Abel joined the force. And so he had a great group of family here and chief, and a lot of the administration was here as well. And we purchased or authorized Chief Stermer to purchase two storm siren replacements yet this year to replace one that is fully inoperable and one that is within six to twelve months of not being operable. Those are the ones at the corner of Broadway and Park, near the corner store, Wastewater Plant, and the other one is the one that's next to the Holiday Inn. So those two...